We'll call the Powell Waste Water Treatment Facility Sewer Commissioners through order at the board and for agenda approval, through the minutes of 3:26 to 15:00, mail Chief Operators' operation report on April through July and the budget adjustment.
So moved.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye and new business will be the bottom line. Okay, with that, approval, all those in favor say aye. All right. Approval, the minutes of 3:26 to 15:00, we all were here, so.
I'm gonna just peek at them. It's longer to open it, okay?
Yep, me too. I was gonna say.
Solar decommission, application, budgeted adjustments, approval.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, mail, do you have any more?
Couple pieces of mail.
Okay, the one to do with the person has sent, this is, you all should have this attachment to your thing, is to do with the wastewater treatment plant solar net meter proposal from Trillian Partners. I've spoken with this person and basically what he cannot make tonight's meeting, but what he would like us to do is to review and sort of look through this and see whether we think it's something we should move more forward on, where he could make a more solid contract type proposal and come and discuss it with us. This is basically for a 500 kilowatt solar array on our superfund site out here. So what it's for, it's basically would be a 20-year contract where Trillian would lease the lien underneath to Trillian proposal to pay $10,000 per year to rent. And they basically would provide a lower rate, fixed price rate for them for 20 years. So no matter where the price went, they would remain at that for 20 years. And they're estimating that you would have a savings of that of close to $380,000 over 20 years. Just because even if the rates stayed the same as this, but their projection that it might go up a little bit, but not much, 10 cents or so. And then they talk about what their qualifications are. They are looking at one other site where they're getting ready to develop, it's in front of the Public Service Board now, SC Armstrong, at Armstrong Palmer's piece, that's down on, with the gravel bed near that area. It looks like a pretty good proposal, I would urge you all to look at it. What I would recommend is that you take, because we're having trouble with our budgets all the time here for capital funds, I would take the rental fee and put it in there every year, that $10,000. And then at that point, you would get up to where you need to go. Let's face it, we haven't hardly anything in there when we look at it. And if we don't do something, because we're not having enough connections, we're gonna be in deep debt. So, the electrical savings would apply. The thing I liked about the comment they made about the electrical thing, was basically the treatment plant, it utilizes 100% of the electricity that's generated. Currently, this facility is using, this, the period I'm gonna give you for it is 2013 to 2014. I happen to have this because where I've been talking through the years, the different groups that would do this. And there was a time when this was not as beneficial as it is now, because the law changed upstate and these people can do this leasing and net metering, which works a lot better than where they used to just sell you the power at a lower rate and you had a couple thousand a year. This is much better, the way the program works. That's one of the reasons why I say look at it and look at it good. This facility on Dean Road pays, back then was $28,000 a year, 28.5. So if you look at what they were paying, when they're talking about paying, they're paying about half of what the, if you do the least part of, against, no, electricity part is more, it was 360 is what they were saying. So it's about $18,000 a year. So it pays all but $10,000 of that bill.
Right, right.
So that's a significant savings too, just so you know. And I agree, I think one of the other things, Henry, that you talked about earlier, was when these people are here, we should talk about some of the other liens we own in town.
Right, 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 right.
Because I think it's cool.
Because these things that we're talking about, the use form, is limited, is right, got the right word, limited use.
You're talking about old landfills?
Landfills, yeah.
Sites that we basically wouldn't be building something on.
Correct, correct.
So I've talked about it, any comments from Jason?
I don't, I don't have any right now.
Yeah, I say let's bring him in for proposal.
Yeah.
Okay. I guess where I'd like to know this, is, you know, I started this process, what I'd like to do is have Tom, whatever his name was, Tom, sign this thing. I would like to have him work with Darcy, because you're here and if he comes and his engineer comes and they want to do that, you don't have to try to find time to schedule with me, because it's hard.
I'm in and out, as you know, throughout the day, but certainly if he were to call and try to schedule an appointment, or I would make sure I'm around to work with him, that would be just fine, so he can have the time to gather what they need to build a proposal.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, well, yes, and I don't think that we should lag, I think if this is on the table, I think that we should move on it. And whether we do it or whether we don't do it.
Right.
Okay, well, let's bring it on the table and deal with it.
Okay, so, any other comments? The other thing we have here is the wastewater operations maintenance, for both budget adjustments. If everybody has looked down through this, you can explain this.
Oh, I was gonna do the Anne-Marie book, but we'll do it right now.
Can this help?
This is something that we do every single year, it's for Ellen, actually about 90% of these were proposed by Ellen, it's just something that she does for bookkeeping, to close out the books. So, I guess she's approved of all of these and reviewed it, so I just need a formal stamp on them, come aboard.
So basically, you'll look at this, you'll see whether some funds are being reduced because they weren't spent.
Right.
And then there is some that's being applied because of the increase that occurred.
And that helps for the following year to budget better, so every year you're able to budget a little bit better.
And if you look at the numbers, they're equal.
Yeah, there's no changes to the budget, this doesn't affect the users in any way, shape, or form their rate, just be clear on that. It's just something that we do every year for the bookkeeping, it's bookkeeping.
Yeah, for all the rest, they know how much it was spent.
Right, right.
Truly spent. So if you're in agreement, I need a motion to accept the budget adjustment.
So moved.
And a second, then we'll discuss it more if we wish.
Second.
Okay.
Hmm, I've seen a couple of these things. Equipment. Where do we stand with that and what's the future, some of the equipment that we've got here? How, I'm like, how old is this stuff? 10 years old?
I think the thought, the last time we spoke is when I start to build my next budget, I start incorporating that list into that and bring that to you, show you.
At that time?
Right, right. Because that would all come together.
I just wanna bring that up, so that...
And you can have the new truck possibly, new pickup?
Well, maybe that or some other thing.
That would probably be for the next year's list, and how we wanna deal with that, whether it's a waste or a sale, or again, that would be something.
But that's part of the budget.
That's all part of our...
We need to build that into the budget.
Which I think that would be the most appropriate.
And why we're talking about the budget, that's why if you look at these adjustments, we'll know where we had a little extra last time, and some of that might move to other towns.
Right, right.
And it might move into the gallons we see, because they're balanced out. All right, anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I have a notice of a new and increased fee effective July 1st, Vermont Municipal Wastewater Treatment Facilities.
Those are all the licensing and testing and their various fees that they charge.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's a number of them here. But basically, it's just a notice from the Vermont Environmental Conservation and HCM Natural Resources informing you of what those fees are.
Right.
And us. Then we have, this one's from the watershed, Vermont Environmental Conservation Watershed Management.
I could probably comment on that one too, Nelson, if you wanted to.
You would?
The Powell wastewater, the transportation had some leach aids that they wanted to bring here, and the operator just wanted to contact the state to make sure that they didn't need a pre-treatment program in place before sending it to us. And they shared, because of the gallonage, very, very little gallons came, it was 500 gallons. So they didn't, they didn't need a permit. And that's basically just giving them the okay, and we let them know.
And you can follow. That's the mail. Chief Operators reporting, July.
Okay, we performed spring biosalts testing and all the results were related to permitted state pressure levels. And as a reminder, I'm not even sure if you know that, but our NPEs permit expires in June of next year, already. This is our second renewal, so according to our current permit, we need to submit a renewal by December 30th, so I'll be working on that. And bringing in the engineers if we need, just like we did last time.
Can you explain what that is?
It's our state permit, it's actually the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, that is the EPA, federal level permit, the state oversees the EPA.
For our discharge into the river.
It's for the, yes, discharge into the river, regulates pollutants and...
Well, yes, okay.
I reviewed and renewed our agreement with the municipal quality district in Williamstown for disposal and treatment of our biosalts, we do that every three years, he's not raising the price again. He did have a change in the agreement saying that he wanted to let me know 60 days before a price increase, if it was going to be increased. And I had a big conversation with him, just explaining, our budget's so tight, so currently, if he lets me know by February, that way I can incorporate that change into my budget. I explained to him, if you say you're gonna increase it in July, and it starts in September, and I haven't, you know, covered that in my budget, that's gonna be a huge hit to my users. So, he did go back to the February, so he's going to let me know by February, and there's no increase, so that worked out well. And I've also collected the data that I needed on the propane and fuel usage, and what I did was I just drafted up some bid specs and the actual bid forms for submittal, but I'd like to start with the fuel oil, because I just, a few days ago, received the fuel contract from Robert Green, who we've been using straight through this past decade, and the price is $225 a gallon. And I knew we were gonna go out to bid on that, but that's a phenomenal price.
What, where were you paying?
A dollar five more than that.
A dollar five?
It was a dollar five or a third gallon last year.
So it's almost a 30% drop.
It's a huge drop. And here's the good thing, we used 3,000 gallons the year before last, 13 and 14, when we had sort of a moderate winter, we used 500 gallons more this winter, it was similarly cold as we all know. But I can secure the 3,000 at the $225 for $67.50, and my budget's $8,300, so that'll still give me room in my budget if we do need more than that, that gives me my wiggle room. I just think it's a no-brainer to sign this contract.
What's the void's pleasure?
If you've done the research on it, I agree.
So you moved to, your second?
Okay, so second hurdle?
Somebody moved to second, let's do one at a time. All those in favor say aye.
That was for the fuel oil.
Yes, the fuel oil.
And the second portion of that is, the price is the same, whether it's a pre-buy or monthly pay. So I just need to know what your pleasure is on that, we've done both. I know it's easy book-wise, if we do it, you know, one lump sum payment, I think it's better cash flow-wise if we do it monthly, but I don't know, Flinda has a suggestion or...
I think that they'll put together a payment budget.
That's what we did last year.
And, and it's a flat rate, correct?
Correct.
Monthly?
Monthly.
And roll it that way, that way we're not...
We're not shortchanging them.
We're not shortchanging anyone.
As a better, you're not tying up this huge sum of money, then if you don't use all your fuel, they still have, they have a credit for you for next year.
Yeah.
You should be able to...
Emergency funds, you want them, absolutely.
Absolutely.
We're so...
That's what I would both recommend, so happy with that. Let's assume we're doing monthly.
So, you move your second. All those in favor say aye.
Now, the bidding out of the propane for the pump stations, that took a little more effort. We go to the pump stations every month and get the percent left in the tank and record that in our maintenance program. What I did was take that information, along with a ton of information that Linda Conley provided for me, and Ostrom's as well, and I just created an Excel spreadsheet and noted when each month it dropped, and then correlated that to our usage. And fiscal 2014, it was about $3,015, you know, $2,600, so it looks like we're averaging about $3,000 a year, and the average price per gallon was a dollar 38, just taking the last months we had an averaging amount quickly. So, if you want, we don't have a contract with them, this is a flexible payment, but that's the average for the year.
But you've been going with the market?
We've been going with the market on the propane.
That's right, okay.
So if you want to bid this out, okay.
Where are you coming from now?
Ostrom.
Ostrom. I do have, again, I wrote up some specs, and I included all the pump stations, their addresses and their locations and everything, because I'm sure the company will want to go see, it's not just one site, they would have to go to multiple sites. It might be interesting to see what comes back.
Did they charge you for delivery for each site, a delivery fee at each site, or did they...
It's a price per gallon.
A price per gallon.
Is what's listed.
And those tanks are all, we don't own any of those tanks, correct?
I believe you own all of them. I think they were put in the ground as part of the original contract, yes.
Well, that's important, if we do look to bid that out or look to price competitively, we need to know if we...
Well, we've gotta be sure of that, other words, you're gonna have this other charge of...
Yes.
Yeah.
But I would still like to know, I would still like to know what their competitors are, have to offer right now.
Well, yeah.
Becoming very, very, especially propane's been very, very competitive.
Yeah, and the reason was a dollar 38 is because in the end of the year, the prices just went, and really plummeted, those last few deliveries, which were big ones, so that was great.
And I think if you look around, everybody has become very competitive with bidding out for fuel now, everything.
So I think I have everything I need in here, they would all go to Linda, like they always do, but opening down here at the next meeting?
But you would bid this out as all the tanks as one bid?
Yeah.
And what I did was I made a really simple, one-page bid form, and you'll get this page for all of them, so it's apples to apples. 3,000 gallons...
Right, but I would like to see, but if we could, if we could, I would like to see the bid town-wide for, like, the town office, I mean, we're using Ostrom in there also.
But the only problem with that is, we all have different budgets.
That's right, but...
So if they use, they overuse my 500, and then it comes into my 500, now you're using the wastewater budgeted gallons for town gallons, unless you're somehow...
I just want a townwide price, I just want a price for anything that has to do with the town.
Yeah, I would think that...
Yeah, yeah, well, we're gonna pay them second, you're gonna bid 3,000 gallons, then we'll figure out with the town.
So you're not looking for a gallonage amount, you're just looking for a bid price?
I'm looking for a bid price.
Bid price, right.
Beating into any town, common building.
So if it's 4,000 or 12,000, you just want a bid price per gallon?
Yeah, but we... But I think we should know, if we're using 3,000 here, a year, we should have a rough idea what we're using at our transfer station and our town office, we could say to Ostrom...
Well, I have the bid specs written up for me and my locations, I can give this to Linda, and she can then tailor this to me.
And we'll put the other with it.
Okay, okay.
You can leave your bid, I believe, the way it is, there's that number.
Yeah.
And then we'll take the town, when you do the same thing, and say, here, the town is gonna bid, and these are the areas.
Where else does the town have, besides the town office?
Transfer station.
Do they have, I was gonna say, so they have a small tank out there, right?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I just have no idea.
Yes, maybe I don't remember.
Right, I don't know.
Anywhere else?
I don't know if there's any over...
No, they use an oil over there, diesel or...
So just an estimate of my 3,000 plus what you've had for records there, and then put out one bid for the town.
Well, that's what I think.
Okay, I mean, that would be interesting.
But we're gonna tell them that the town office uses...
Approximately this, approximately.
And then when they drive over there, where they use approximately that much.
I would take a different approach, because I do it with my apartment. They will bill for the town office and the waste, the transfer station as a separate bill, and they will bill here as a separate bill.
Correct.
They'll do that with my apartment, and you have to keep track.
And that's exactly what I said.
They'll be able to do this in the future.
It's billed by location.
Right, that's exactly, I said the same thing.
And when they send me a bill, it's broken out.
Should we write that in here, that that has to be billed by location?
Yeah.
Put a reminder.
Yeah.
Well, because what if it's someone different?
You don't know, because some people will just pump it in and then they'll, here's how much you used this month.
No, each place will have its own ticket, I have it too. Wherever they start, it's a ticket.
That's just the way I think.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll get this to Linda, we'll add in that wording, and then you can add in whatever...
Approximately whatever that...
So this will need to be opened here, then, this can be opened right at Town Hall, because you're gonna get town to bid for Town Hall, okay?
Right, okay.
I'll change that wording too, before I send that to you.
So that was a motion ago, did?
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
I thought I would just get a, like, a bond getting the wording mostly done, so it would be easier for that. Okay, where am I? Okay, we had a new connection go online in June, which was reflected in the master e-log, that'll be active for the next billing, and I also had two more inquiries in the past couple of weeks for two more possible new connections. I provided them with the information that they need to proceed, and both of those actually have scuffs that were left, so those will be pretty cut and dry. We experienced some vandalism over the past moment, but really I think this is the first real vandalism that we had, they took rocks and those big rocks on the ball field, right in the middle where the turnaround is, and just checked them at the pump station and took nicks out. So we repaired the nicks and took off all the old paint and repainted everything, so it looks pretty good, but that kind of got us thinking, we've never experienced that level of vandalism, so what about the big windows that are in the pump station doors? What if someone were to break those and get inside? So I got Jeff Head's from Scrap Metal, he actually gave me, and then I donated to here, but they fabricated some really nice window guards for them before. And the feeling is, even if the window does get broken, no one will be able to enter the building.
Who has the whole idea?
A lot of switches.
The window might may get broken.
But at least, at least they can't get in, and that's the big thing.
We just hadn't really given much of that, because we hadn't had anything like that happen before, so...
Good, excellent.
Okay, they also fabricated two more items, a manhole cover left, that works right off the lift and the truck, and boy, did that come in handy. We had a sinkhole over on Main Street, and it was probably just due to the initial construction, Casey explained it, they probably didn't put the original material back and some of it settled. We had to open the manholes to check our pipe, make sure everything was okay, and it was perfectly fine, no way we're gonna be getting that off without that left.
Did they patent this so they can sell it to other towns and make a little money for it?
I haven't talked about it yet. But we had to pound and pound and pound on that manhole and dig, you know how it is sometimes, and that made a huge difference.
Some of those simple things, I think we'll be seeing in the next minutes.
Yeah. Oh, and the sewer rake, that ended up pretty, that worked really well too. Spring maintenance activities throughout the infrastructure, we began repairing manholes, the grinder stations have all received their maintenance checks, we've begun painting as well. Then, this is interesting, the main plant generator alarmed to fail to start in May, just during a regular scheduled Thursday run, so that was scary. So I had one, the generator people come out, and they couldn't find a darn thing wrong.
No moists this time?
No moists, right, right. It's, everything seemed to be fine, they put it through battery tests, failed to start next time. So I had Kat come out, because Kat has a computer, they could connect in, and nothing, could not find a thing wrong with that, failed again. We were trying it now, like, every couple of days, and I said, I said, you know, it's weird that those start 10 times in a row, but you wait a couple of days, it almost seems like something's fading, like, and then Carl said, I know those batteries are testing correctly, but I think we should replace them, putting batteries in, spend time or something. The battery voltage we're testing fine though, but it wasn't the batteries.
But you test the voltage, you grab a cell there, and it'll talk.
He said they're right about a dead cell, like, inside of it, that every now and then was...
Are we doing a yearly PM on those?
Next week.
With Kat?
We're using, because you're asking me, I'm drawing one. But yeah, they're pretty, they're very, very good, it just was one of those things, like, we had two professional generator maintenance techs come out, and they didn't come up with it's just the batteries.
Of course, we have, we have many more batteries than you've got here where I am. We actually have a program where we tap those batteries and we tell when a dead cell occurred, because it will take down a whole string.
Oh, you're darned.
It will take down a whole string.
Well, that's what's happening, one dead cell. So, anyway, Carl ended up doing that work.
Draws it to death, weakens the whole thing.
Then we can have to spend another $600. Let's see, we received a visit from a local resident, this was interesting too, reported their sewer cleanup had packed up about two feet over the winter, and so they just pushed it back down in, but then thought, maybe I should go tell Darcy that I did that, because that might not have been so good. Katie told me, like, yeah, that's not so good. So, thank you to Carl for letting us use his tractor, because holy moly, no, it's a big hole to dig, but we had to dig it out, and it was right full of rocks, it was packed right full of stone. So we brought out the trusty vacuum cleaner and sucked out all the rocks, and then I took the camera and just did a TV inspection to make sure that they were free and clear, and made sure it's not gonna pop up again, for sure.
Who were we speaking to?
Yeah, Rachel Woodhouse.
Oh, okay, right here in North Powell.
Yeah, right here in North Powell. I'm glad he came and got me, because he would've had some serious issues in about a week.
Sure would.
Yeah. Let's see, the manhole at the end of Center Street, we noticed there was a huge crack in the side of that, it's right where they were palling the snow, probably got hit. So we removed the entire top section, dug it all out, cleaned it all out, and re-cemented the whole thing, and that seems to have worked pretty good. There's a lot less inflow coming in through there now. And as my brother drove by, just when I was taking the picture of that, it was funny. Sign thing.
Drove right by too.
Drove right by, and I'm like, click, oh sure, the hardware's over, drive on by, brother. But, let's see, and we also did the whole gravity portion, line up Center Street, we just flushed that, we do it over here, it needs a good flushing, it's one of those lines that we keep doing. We had a flood event down at PB1 at the end of May, we had a big rain event and had a high flow in there. Number one became clogged with debris, so we had to pull it from the wet well and take it apart and clean it and resed it.
That was at Green Mountain?
Eltagar, yeah, yeah, yeah. But here, you can actually see, we ripped it all apart, you can see the debris that got caught in the cutters, and again, it looks like clothing, I just don't know how to...
Well, and you're saying that this occurs only when it's high...
Well, what happens is, when a lot of flow comes through there, it really gets that wet well churned up, so things that might've been floating are now being pushed to the bottom, and, you know, we clean the top of the wet well, as you well know, with a lobster pot, at least once a year, sometimes twice a year, but, you know, can't do it every day, so...
I guess, I guess where I'm going with this is because we're doing this so often, I'm just wondering where in that park or all these sources where the water's coming in, it's in a low spectrum. Of course, if it wouldn't be worth paying someone to inspect all those and make sure they're sealed, to see if it would stop this, so we're not doing this two or three times a year when you have heavy rain.
We've talked about that, I don't know if you were here, the last meeting and the meeting before, it's very difficult, with it being that they're only, they're just PVC plastic.
So you don't have to pull them apart or...
There's real, yeah, there's so many of them, Nelson, and I just...
Well, I know, but if you do this two or three times a year, or five or 10 years, you've got some money out there where, if, I know that they did this slip joint, and I'm not sure if it isn't worth going in and cutting them off and doing PVC, so that they're all solid, connect.
You're still breaking vessels easily, you could pull them apart or break them, it's very easy.
That's the reality.
The real hole, cut them and use...
It could be worse.
We've talked about extensively when I was running... We've talked about it extensively when I was Ronnie.
Like if we do something like that, the problem could become worse, like you mentioned.
Well, then the other side of it is how much can you become as possible for?
And then I'll be pleased anymore. Yeah, it'll get into, we're dealing with it as best we can. Let's put it that way. And we're not the only municipality out there.
Well, I guess the other side of it is, there is a new owner and you might want to find out who that is and nail in what you used to nail to Eugene.
I think that's a reasonable request, yes.
The guy seems to be, from what I've heard, is taking a lot of debris out of the place and is trying to do something. So if he has a better understanding of what the issues are?
Yeah, I think what we did was we sent him a do not flush and please pass this around to residents. And really, that's what we can do.
And I would, I would let in all the issues we've been having and anything he could do could help and we greatly appreciate it.
Sure, I'm sure.
Sort of rolling the new guy aboard?
Yeah, well, that's right. The news I've heard, he's really trying to make a difference there. Am I correct on that or not?
You are.
Trying to pump through that.
And I've seen some of it.
Okay, well, I was just here saying as far as what I'm talking about.
He's taken a number of loads over already. No, I think he'll do the right thing. I think it's just that we need to open his mind to what our issues are and then work with us. And then we'll work with him.
Yes, yes.
Let's see, so the fence area around the controls was becoming overcome by trees and shrubs and just, you know, for security reasons. I don't have an aftershot. I don't know why I don't have an aftershot, but that's all that is now gone. And so we can see the controls and we can see the generator. And the fence this winter raised out of the ground and I was a little bit afraid that there might be an access vulnerability there. So for security, we dug the fence out.
So where was this located?
That's also at the PV1 station I was just talking about down at the end of the Elta and that one as well.
So what we see there on that, one is with the solar lights and stuff, is that back to somebody here?
That is the pump station control panel that you're looking at. I'm looking up at the, you know how they raised it up?
On the bank, on the tree, yeah, okay.
And we had an exhaust system stopped working at PV3. We have a spare one on the shelf to replace that. Septage suction line became plugged in our septic receiving area and we could not backflow it. So we had to have it pumped and we had to put Jeff in there. You see how happy he looks? We didn't have all the proper equipment in place and had to actually pull it back from the suction line from inside of the wet well. It was the only way to get it out. But we got it. We've been accepting a lot of septic and that's been going well too. Received a grinder eight station at the Elton May and the homeowner did exactly what we instructed him to do. We got the, what we do on our grinder stations is we have instructions of what to do. You know, push the button, make the phone call, don't worry, we'll be there. The homeowner did exactly what you're supposed to do. And the start flow was just full of grease. So it wasn't tripping and we're ready to start. Received a house service plug call from Eltagar. I was on Father's Day, so I had to call Jeff out and we responded with the judder and the town's line was actually clear. So there was something probably going on underneath the home. And let's see, PC1 had a large amount of grease in it. That's the school. So we used our lobster pot on that and just, you know, the button, got rid of that. And my last thing is the next scheduled meeting is in August, but it's a flexible month. So if you're going to review these bid specs, I guess we can meet, oh, do you want to go with...
If we can get any...
We shoot for August now? Okay, okay.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Okay, we'll shoot for August to meet about that and anything else. We have a, we have a couple of applications.
If you have bids, but whatever, we'll...
We'll look at it.
All right.
Anything else?
We will look at, we'll look at the town and lists, right, Nelson? Right, okay, no, okay.
That gives us, you know...
Okay, so a lot of our pot, that's not a...
That's funny, no, that's perfect.
Made that in-house too.
I want to make sure that you keep the pictures of some of our workers, especially Jeff's, because we do get a website set up. We'll want to put pictures up of our employees.
That was a good one.
Show them at work.
Well, that job right there, yes.
People don't know.
They need to realize, and you certainly know that.
Yes. So we were busy. I'll end with that.
Nothing else?
I have nothing else.
Take a motion.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Where are they?
Sign my notes?
I didn't speak to that one.
Right though, you got all the approved employees.